I hereby call to order this meeting of the Planning Board on Tuesday, December 8th, at 6 o'clock. This is a real Planning Board meeting this time. Is there anyone here that wants to speak to something not on our agenda today? Something that is not on our agenda? Okay. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes from December 1st. The first thing I'd mention is that my minutes say December 2nd. I have no other comments. Anyone else? No? Is there a motion?
We approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any against or abstentions?
I have seen it's like didn't have a chance to review them thoroughly.
Okay. Alright. Okay. I hereby open the public hearing to consider the requests by 34 Hill Road, 1776 Brewing Company LLC to amend an existing special permit. The Planning Board has received some materials I want to acknowledge. We got a copy of the stormwater management plan, which it was from 2011, from the applicant. We also got a response to it from the city engineer. We received a memo from the neighbors. And finally, we have a draft of our decision to review and potentially approve whatever modifications that we deem are appropriate. We've heard from many people on this issue and deliberated at length. And at this time, as we enter our final deliberations on the draft decision, I'd like to ask the Board if we have a motion to close the public hearing portion of this so we can move on to reviewing our information in the draft.
Anything a motion to be closed that's...
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any against or abstentions? Nancy, you ask. Alright. Our next step is to review the draft and to discuss it and any potential changes. Let's start by reading the narrative. If that's okay with you guys? Take a look at it. I'd like to start by saying I know this is a tremendous amount of work and I want to thank you for putting in the effort. It's very much appreciated. This is the decision of the East Hampton Planning Board on the application of 1776 Brewing Company LLC, applicant, 34 Hill Road, East Hampton, Massachusetts, for a request to amend to an existing special permit dated September 28th, 2011, to include residential... excuse me, to include incidental retail uses to the manufacturing of alcohol beverages. The subject property is located at 34 Hill Road, East Hampton, Massachusetts, and zoned industrial. The application was filed with the city on October 6th, 2015. Advertisements were duly published in the Daily Hampshire Gazette on October 13th, 2015, and October 20th, 2015. Hearing notices sent to parties of interest on October 13th, 2015. Public hearing was held on October 27th, 2015, November 17th, 2015, December 1st, 2015, and December, it says 5th here, but clearly today is the 8th, 2015. The requested use requires a special permit from the Planning Board per the Table of Uses, Table 5 point, excuse me, 5-1, wholesale transportation in industrial category number 10. General manufacturing use is not commonly considered hazardous or noxious. The definition of manufacturing in the East Hampton zoning order in Section 2 definition states incidental activities such as retail sales are permitted. The site contains an existing 10,000 square foot manufacturing facility with a 600 square foot tasting room, located on three acres with frontage on Fort Hill Road. The facility will primarily manufacture and bottle alcoholic beverage. Incidental uses will include the retail of products and merchandise, as well as a tasting room for the pouring and consumption of alcoholic beverages manufactured on the site. The hours of operation for the tasting room are subordinate to the hours of operation of the manufacturing facility. The applicant may host indoor and outdoor music in association with the tasting room hours. The off-street parking lot will accommodate 60 parking spaces with two spots designated for handicap parking. 25 parking spots, including the handicap parking and the access driveway, will be paved, while the auxiliary spaces will remain gravel. Truck access will remain on the southeast side of the existing building. Now, there's more to this. We have our conditions and such later, but I figured we'd start with the description text because that was quite a mouthful. Some of what we have here has been highlighted. I already mentioned the date portion, December 8th. I think we can get that one out of the way real quick. That should say December 8th.
Right. I highlighted it in case this got continued and another date needed to be added in there. So that was more of a reference point for myself.
Okay. We have, I think, at least I do, some question about the word tasting room, the hours of operation. Does anyone else have... Where it says the hours of operation for the tasting room are subordinate to the operation of the manufacturing facility. That was added in additional language, but from what I understand, it's just restating...
Yes. So I added, I highlighted it because, because the previous paragraph notes that this is incidental activity to manufacturing, I wanted it to be clear that that incidental activity is subordinate because of the hours of operation. That's what's making it subordinate at this time.
Okay. Does anyone have issue with that?
No, but I had something in the previous paragraph.
Okay. So before we go forward, you're good with adding that in?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead to the previous paragraph then.
Okay. So, the, in the last meeting, we had been talking about incidental use versus accessory use, and I thought we had gotten closer to a consensus on using accessory use instead of incidental use, and I would like to raise that again.
Read the sentence.
Sure. So this is the last sentence of the second paragraph. The definition of manufacturing in the... Oh, sorry, wait. Yes.
It's in two locations. It's in the first paragraph as well.
Yep.
Saying to include incidental retail uses to the manufacturing of alcoholic beverages. So there's one area.
And then to the East Hampton zoning ordinance, Section 2 definition states incidental activities such as retail sales are permitted incidental to the manufacturing use. So, the other way to do this is to have it be an accessory use, in which case the, it's still allowed under the, the use is still allowed under the zoning ordinance, but it's just categorized a different way and additionally, in addition to the hours of operation being subordinate, would add that the area devoted to the accessory use would need to be no greater than 40%.
Which is way more than a 600.
Which is way more than what we have. But I just feel more comfortable, given that, you know, all of the conditions that we've gone through, I think, in this process really show that the tasting room use, it's more than incidental because we had to put it, you know, add conditions to account for its impact. So I think accessory is a more appropriate way to categorize it.
Any comments on changing the word incidental to accessory? No? I looked into it a little too. It caught me a bit off-guard at the last meeting, and what I looked into is that it is a slight difference, but the uses described don't seem anywhere near, this won't make any difference to you whatsoever in his minutia. So, I personally think accessory is okay. Are you good with that?
So go ahead and change that.
Yeah.
So it'll say to include accessory.
Did you have anything else, anyone, that they want to change in this paragraph?
No.
We had a question of the tasting...
I do actually in relation to this. So that last sentence, the incidental is in quotes because that's part of the definition of manufacturing. If that is not going to be used to explain this, then I feel like that sentence needs to be stricken and there needs to be a reference to the definition of accessory uses in regards to the standards that are associated with that. Because the standards are actually within that definition. So...
Yes.
I'd like to make that switch, then the definition that I'm referencing is in definition to accessory use is not manufacturing. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And I apologize because I thought there was going to be proposed language to account for that, so I don't have something drafted.
Do we have that definition handy?
Yes, it's in the zoning, which you have in front of you, so uses, comma, accessory.
Let's check it out first.
And I'm gonna...
Hit me with a page.
Okay. So the definition is...
212?
212.
And I'm gonna look it up on that table of uses as well.
Two words, terms, definitions.
Yeah, so it would be, so, okay, let's see. So I think it would need to say the Table of Use Regulations 5-1.
Well, it'd still reference the, still reference number, category number 10, manufacturing.
Then that last sentence...
That last sentence would then reference the...
The Table of Uses.
No, the definition for accessory use.
Definition.
The definition.
And you don't want to then further elaborate that the accessory uses...
Does it say anything that retail sales are allowed?
Because it's number...
It says that it's, hold on. Use accessory. Any, a use incidental and subordinate to the principal use of a structure or lot. An accessory use other than a home occupation may not occupy more than 40% of the total area of the structure or lot which it's located, except that this limitation does not apply to uses accessory to scientific research, development, or related production. When the principal use is permitted by right in the zoning district, that's all the science stuff that's exempt for zoning under Chapter 4, Chapter 40A, master general law. There's an exemption for a scientific accessory uses. So essentially by referencing that, you're then tying it to that standard of that, the total area of the accessory uses cannot constitute more than 40% of the total square footage of the...
Right. And then do we need to also reference that the...
Retail sales.
Yes, I can do that as well.
Accessory use in the...
That general retail is also permitted.
Yes.
Yep.
Again, I think 40% of your, of your space currently using a lot less than that right now for this, so I can't imagine that that's, that's going to...
In sort of relation to that, going back to that highlighted sentence about hours of operation, I would also propose that maybe it gets sort of rearranged a little bit to say the hours of operation and a square footage for the tasting room are subordinate to the manufacturing facility, period. And then that way it addresses both of those two issues.
Okay. Need to default to the base uses of the zoning. I'm good with that. Can you read that?
Hours of operation in the square footage for the tasting room are subordinate to the manufacturing facility.
Any comments about that? Anything else in this paragraph or in this section, description section, that folks want to change? Is that where you had the tasting room before? You said the hours of operation for the tasting room. Right above it, the sentence beforehand that says, it said incidental, so I guess now it's going to say accessory uses will include the retail of products and merchandise, as well as a tasting room for the pouring and consumption of alcoholic beverages manufactured on site. There was a suggestion that the word tasting room be visited?
Right, to strike tasting room because it's not necessary to...
Right. And we were before, I think we were going to have a definition of that, and it was just saying as well as for the, for the pouring and consumption of alcoholic beverages.
So then that, so that hours of operation and square footage for the accessory uses are subordinate to the manufacturing facility? If you want to strike tasting room, so just change it to accessory use?
It's really a question, do we feel we need tasting room to be in there to define in this description, what's occurring here? It says for the pouring and consumption of alcoholic beverages manufactured, and so, you know, I think that covers it.
Right. I think the pouring and consumption of alcoholic beverages sort of describes what a tasting room is.
Yeah, I agree.
And without having to define tasting room as a physical space.
So, that sentence would just get changed to accessory uses will include the retail of products and merchandise...
For the pouring.
For the pouring and consumption of alcoholic beverages manufactured on site. And then...
Or and the pouring. Because products and merchandise could be t-shirts and something else, and we wouldn't use t-shirts for the pouring of alcoholic beverages.
Yep. And, and then so, and the hours of operation for the accessory uses are subordinate to the manufacturing facility.
Yeah.
I think we're good with that.
The hours of operation and the square footage.
Yes, yes.
Okay. I would like to consider striking the sentence that follows, the applicant may host indoor and outdoor music in association with the tasting room hours. I think it complicates the job of the Planning Board versus the job of the licensing board. And, you know, the licensing board will decide whether you have the entertainment license to host music or not.
However, you do have a condition that refers to music, so there's got to be something, you can't just have a condition without any reference to something else.
So would it work to, in the, let's see. In the condition, can we say if appropriately...
You're referring to stuff in condition 7.
Six.
Six, rather.
Six and seven.
Alright.
Would it work to put in condition six or elsewhere in the document, something that says, as permitted by the licensing board, or as licensed by the license, if, if allowed by the licensing board, then...
But your job as the Planning Board is to, under your findings, is to consider noise as one of, one of the elements of impact of a use.
I tend to agree with the instinct to clean stuff out and make it neater and cleaner, but given that we need a reference...
You gotta reference it somewhere.
How about the applicant may, comma, if...
Back in the description.
Right.
But, but remember you have a whole paragraph on the second page that says, decision only applies to the requested amended special permit. Other approvals or permits required under the zoning ordinance, general ordinances, other governmental boards, agencies, or bodies having jurisdiction shall not be assumed or implied by this decision.
I just don't want there to be any confusion. Do people feel that that is clear enough? Or should we just...
You've never referenced another board, ever, in a decision.
Okay.
And given that we need a reference, I think that...
This came up at the last meeting, so I'm trying to make sure...
I strike that. There has been references to Conservation Commission, so, okay. I retract that statement.
Okay. I mean, overall, as I said, I kind of agree that I like to clean things up, but I feel that I don't have replacement for this that's as workable. Do you?
That was my suggestion, just to set, to clarify that we're not saying they can host music. You know, we're not, you know, we're not giving them permission to do that because they need to get that permission from the licensing board. And when it says may, to me, it sounds like we are somehow giving them that permission.
Implicitly giving...
Yeah.
Well, they have that capability already.
Yeah.
Yeah. But they have, but you're contingent on the license, so, okay. If people think it's clear.
It's difficult.
It's, I think it's on the line of confusing, but...
Do we, how do you, how does everyone else feel about that? Leave it? Strike it? Any comments at all?
I think we ought to leave it.
Leave it?
Yeah, just leave it.
Chat?
Yeah, leave it.
Leave it? Alright, well, that's, I'm with Jordan right there, so...
That'll...
Alright, let's move on. Was there anything else in the description? Alright. The decision then continues on. It says, following the conduction of the public hearing at publicly posted meetings and a site visit on November 20th, 2015, the Board voted, and we have to figure out what the, what our vote is, on a motion to approve the special permit application identified above us, the Board found the project was not detrimental to the neighborhood and was a suitable use for the industrial district. It then goes to show who was present, who was not. Obviously, we'll need to change the who voted, et cetera, but I think that boilerplate there is good. And then we get to the meat. This decision incorporates the attached plans, specifications, and/or designs presented before the Board dated November 13th, 2015, and revised site plan submitted on November 30th, 2015, as part of this application, with the understanding that the terms and conditions of this decision supersede any conflicts between the plans, specification, and/or designs, and this decision. Any significant departure from the attached plans, specifications, and/or designs without approval by the Board may result in the rescinding of this decision. This decision applies only to the requested and amended special permit. Other approvals or permits required under the zoning ordinance, general ordinance, other governmental boards, agencies, or bodies having jurisdiction shall not be assumed or implied by this decision. Any person, municipal officer, or municipal board agreed by this decision has the right to appeal pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 17. Any such appeal must be filed within 20 days after the date the decision is filed with the municipal clerk. And then we get to our findings, which are A through J. In accordance with MGL Chapter 40A and the East Hampton zoning ordinance, the Planning Board found that A, the application was in conformance with the provisions and ordinances of the city of East Hampton, the general laws of Massachusetts, and all applicable state and federal rules and regulations, as other federal, state, and local permits were granted to the applicant for the manufacturing and tasting of alcohol beverages, as well as hosting entertainment. B, that state amenities and abutting properties will be protected as the use was not found to be detrimental or offensive for the industrial zoning district. The applicant proposed adequate measures to protect abutting residential properties from excessive noise, and the site did not have important natural scenic or historic features. C, vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relationship to adjoining ways and property was safe and convenient, as the applicant will pave the driveway and require a number of minimum off-street parking spaces, including two handicap spaces, as well as provide adequate lighting for both the paved and gravel parking areas. The Board found the traffic generated by the incidental, I guess that's going to be accessory now?
Yep.
Accessory, retail uses, and tasting room, pardon me, would not detrimentally impact adjacent roads due to the limited hours of operation of the incidental uses.
Sorry, should it be...
Accessory.
Yeah, accessory. And should it be accessory uses and strike and tasting room?
Yes, and strike down.
Agreed.
Okay.
Agreed. Just accessory uses.
And we don't need retail either? Yeah, just accessory uses.
Generated by the uses? You just want to leave it uses?
Accessory uses.
Oh, accessory uses.
Not accessory retail uses.
Yeah, okay, you're right. Okay. I mean, you could accessory, including retail, it's already defined above. Yes, redundant, okay. D, the methods of disposal in sewage and refuse was adequate as the applicant uses existing public water and sewer, and the proposed amendment to the special permit will have no impact on these methods. The drainage of surface and subwater was adequate as the new pavement for the parking and driveway is compatible with the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, SWPP, dated October 17th, 2012. And we have in yellow, as confirmed by the city engineer, we didn't have that confirmation at this point, but then we received a letter from the city engineer, which I'd like to take this time to read. Jessica, your turn to you. I'm in agreement with the original SWPP and the associated stormwater system can accommodate the proposed new paved area as long as the entire parking lot is not paved. Paving the entire parking area may require a review of the drainage design to ensure the existing stormwater detention areas are sufficient to handle the increased runoff. Since the limit of paving has not been delineated on the revised site plan, it would be prudent to ask for a more defined pavement plan. I am, however, strongly in favor of paving the entrance driveway to reduce the amount of sediment laden stormwater that runs down the driveway into Fort Hill Road. During several high-intensity rainfall events since the site was constructed, there have been incidents of erosion of the driveway, I think we saw some of that on our site visit, and the drainage swell, swale along the roadway. I don't know what that word means. What's swale?
Swale is a ditch.
It's a ditch at the end. Or something. Particular attention should be given to the driveway paving where it meets Fort Hill Road to ensure that stormwater is properly directed into the drainage swale to prevent it from flowing directly into the roadway. Sufficient riprap...
Again, large stone.
Thank you. Should be provided to prevent eroding of the swale and/or driveway shoulders. Okay? So we've asked him to pave the driveway there as part of this.
So the engineer is saying that we should request...
A more formal, a more formal plan.
Can we do that in a way that it's...
No, once we, once we vote, we're out of deliberation. So, I think that the plan we have, as given to us...
Well, let me just, an idea just popped in my head. You could add another condition that, because if you remember, the 2011 required him to put together a stormwater plan and submit it and get it signed off by the city engineer and the health agent. You could do something similar, requiring...
As per the 2011 agreement?
But he's not asking for a new stormwater plan, he's asking for a...
No, 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 I'm asking for a pavement plan and, you know, some certification from the city engineer that the pavement plan...
Meets with the previous...
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Right.
Okay, so we're going to add a condition K.
Eight?
Sorry. Eight, I meant to say, eight. I'm still on the findings. Which will say applicants must provide a parking plan. Do you want to be more formal than that?
What is, whatever Jim's...
Yeah, he says...
More defined pavement plan.
A defined pavement, well, a pavement plan. He says a more defined pavement plan, but I...
Right.
That doesn't appear formal enough for me. A professionally developed pavement plan?
Well, what you need to know, and this came up at the last meeting, is that 25 spaces are to be paved. What 25 spaces are to be paved? And that, it's, honestly, I mean, it's a simple delineation on a plan. Here's the line.
A pavement site plan?
Why don't we just say...
No, 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 you could take the site plan and you could simply put a line on it with a notation. This is to be paved, this is to stay as gravel. I mean, it's not a huge...
How about we just say a pavement plan delineating which portion of the parking lot will be paved?
I'm going to make pay.
Write that down.
What is it again?
Please.
Applicant will provide a pavement plan delineating which portion or which part?
Part.
Which part of the parking lot will be paved?
Which will remain gravel.
And...
Which will remain gravel.
Which will remain gravel. And, and then...
You gotta tie it back to the stormwater.
Yeah.
It's not just asking for a pavement plan, it's, you're asking for the pavement plan because it's connected to the stormwater plan. And this, and that's where the city engineer, the city engineer isn't...
Since the limit of the pavement plan has not been delineated on the revised site plan, so the applicant must provide, which we've got so far, and we'll tie this in.
The delineated...
Delineating.
Delineation of the pavement. That's quicker than saying what you just said, honestly.
Good, great, great, great.
So...
Good. Can I get what we have so far?
How about demonstrating that there are no required changes to the, that the paving will not, will...
That remains in conformance with the original SWPP?
Yeah, that. Mm-hmm.
But what if we need to change the SWPP? You can do that very easily, you can easily.
That's a good question.
But I'm just saying that...
With the language I assume you create.
I'm just trying to think of a way to plan.
That is in conformance with either the original or a new SWPP.
Yeah.
Sounds terrible.
Demonstrate that the plan is in, how about we just say in compliance with...
Whatever.
A current SWPP?
The stormwater, the view can approved by the city engineer. I'm looking at the plan. Yeah, I have to pull that out. I don't have it right in my hand. Final sites stormwater management plan should be reviewed by the city engineer. Board of Health. Applicant must provide delineation of the pavement and demonstrate that the site plan is in compliance with the site stormwater management plan. Something like that, in compliance, because if it's not, then you can update the plan to make it in compliance.
That sounds good to me.
What did I just say? That the plan is in compliance with the SWPP and something about being reviewed by the city engineer. There's got to be some city engineer oversight.
What's the language there for the city engineer?
The final storm, this is from the 2011 permit, the final site stormwater management plan shall be reviewed by the city engineer and Board of Health, so that's...
Review, yeah, and then reviewed and approved by the city engineer. To the end of what you've got.
Provide the delineation of the pavement and demonstrate that the plan is in compliance with the SWPP. And demonstrate to the city engineer? And demonstrate to the city engineer, to, no?
To be reviewed and approved by the city engineer.
Be reviewed and approved by the city engineer.
You can probably strike, strike reviewed and just say to be approved by the city engineer.
Yeah, few approvals without reviewing it is on him.
So the applicant must provide a delineation of the pavement and demonstrate that the plan is in compliance with the SWPP. To be reviewed by the city engineer, that just doesn't make sense.
No.
That the plan is in compliance.
And has been reviewed, is in compliance and has been reviewed by the city engineer.
Delineation of the pavement and.
How about that the applicant will provide and submit for approval to, or submit to the city engineer for approval, A.
There we go. Wow, that was easy, huh? Applicant must provide and submit to the city engineer delineation of the pavement plan and demonstrate that the plan is in compliance with the SWPP.
I like the language, everyone good with that?
Great.
Yep.
Should it say pavement for parking and driveway?
Well, it's a pavement plan, so it's gonna include.
It's gonna include the driveway.
Okay. So I think that covers our D and we can move now to E. Uh, there was no Wetlands Protection Act jurisdiction per comments from the Conservation Commission dated October twelfth, two thousand fifteen. F, there was no adverse impacts on the city's resources, including water supplies, sewage collection systems, fire protection systems, and streets based on the comments received by the health agent and the fire department. G, provisions for the loading and unloading of vehicles were incidental to the, to the normal operation of the establishment. The revised site plan dated November thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, established a new parking lot configuration which addressed internal traffic control. The applicant will also adequately illuminate both the paved and gravel parking lot to ensure pedestrian and vehicular safety. At any point you guys see anything in here that you don't like, step up, but this is all really straightforward. H, the integration of the building into the existing landscape is not applicable as this is an existing building. I, the applicant will not be removing any additional vegetation with a new paved and gravel off-street parking area. J, the existing building is consistent with dimensional standards and the board found the placement of parking was adequate. K, the measures to prevent pollution of surface or groundwater were adequate. As the new pavement for the parking and driveway is compatible with the Stormwater Pollution Plan Prevention, uh, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, SWPPP. Dated October seventeenth, two thousand twelve, as confirmed with the city engineer, which we've now done. The use will not, uh, excuse me, L, the use will not constitute a nuisance by reason of air or water pollution, excessive noise, or visually flagrant structures or accessories. As the applicant proposed adequate measures to protect abutting residential properties from excessive noise through sound mitigation measures. And the approved Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan dated October seventeenth, two thousand twelve, provides measures to prevent water pollution. Okay? No new structures or accessories were to be built under this amendment and the board found the incidental retail uses would not create air pollution.
Accessory uses.
Accessory. And retail.
How does, how does the, the sound barrier come into play there when it's an accessory?
That's, that's under the conditions, that's a good question, let's, and we're there, conditions. After hearing from and questioning the applicant at the hearing and in light of the proceedings, the board therefore decided to grant the special permit under the.
I'd like to change that to amend.
Amend the special permit. I'm good with that, cause that's what they're doing. Amend the special permit under the East Hampton zoning ordinance in accordance with the following conditions, and we have seven of them. Here's number one. Twenty-five parking spots, including two handicap spaces, will be paved with bituminous or cement concrete material in front of the building, including the access driveway. The paved surface shall be graded and drained as to dispose of all surface water accumulation.
Should we put that other condition that we just drafted, just add it on to the first condition, or are they two distinct?
They're two separate things, but I could move it underneath it and make the new one number two so that they're.
Related.
Yeah. They're calling one another?
Yeah, that's fine, okay.
Okay.
Alright, and since we've just added that and it's going to be number two, will you please read that one one more time?
Uh, the applicant must provide and submit to the city engineer a delineation of the pavement plan and demonstrate that the plan is in compliance with the SWPP. And I'll spell out SWPP in the condition.
Okay. And then our new number three. Lighting will be provided sufficient to illuminate the paved and gravel parking lot, including the following locations relative to the building. On the southwest rear, the northwest side, and northeast front of the property. Any comments? Number four, new number four. Driveway reflectors will be placed at the end of the driveway adjacent to Fort Hill Road. Any comments?
Oh, sorry, never mind.
Alright.
Reading ahead.
A new number five. A light will be placed at the top of the driveway sufficient to illuminate that portion of the paved parking lot and driveway. Good? New number six. All paved parking spaces will be striped and marked and handicap spaces will be marked in accordance with the traffic rules and orders of the cities of East Hampton. Section one dash thirty-three handicapped parking ordinance. I'm definitely good with that one. Any comments? Our new number seven. Outdoor amplified music shall be limited between the hours of two and eight P M. I thought, isn't it limited two, there's a missing two there.
Could be limited two between the hours.
Everyone good with that change of adding the word two?
Yeah.
Okay. And then our final one, our number eight. A sound mitigation barrier such as Plexiglas must be used when amplified music is played outdoors. Which is what we came to at the last meeting. Any comments or changes?
I would like to discuss one additional potential condition. If there's no comments on the ones we just went over.
None, haven't heard any, go ahead.
Okay. So, let me see. So, the, the reason for this, for the proposed extra condition is to underscore and ensure that the. You, the accessory use does not become the primary use. Um, because, you know, I think that's been a concern that we've heard raised and. So I'd like to propose something, I'm open to changes to this, but something along the lines of hours of operation. Square footage of accessory use, oh, let's try this. Hours of operation, square footage, and revenue of accessory uses shall remain subordinate to the primary use.
Well, we already have a statement.
It's redundant, I think.
Second, third paragraph, that says the hours of operation for the tasting are subordinate to the hours of operation.
So here's my, here's my concern or question about that. When, when this original proposed amendment came to us, we had an existing permit where there was something in the description that was not in the conditions that was contentious. Um, which was the, the language shall not include a pub or retail component, right? So, thinking about the confusion that was raised by that, it seems prudent to me. And if we need to strike it from the description or change the, the ordering so that it's not redundant, that it seems prudent to me to explicitly put it in the conditions section. So that we are clear that this is not an optional thing.
I just don't agree. Um, I think that we've covered it already in the narrative and I think that what we've covered basically says they're defaulting to their base use. And I don't think adding a comment that you're defaulting to your base use as a condition is appropriate, it's just redundant. I, I don't think you gain anything from it.
What do others think?
Well, I'm just trying to get in plain words here, so I can understand.
I think what she's saying, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is to take the comments that we have here, uh, that we've just modified about the subordinate use. And take, strike them from the narrative and instead make them a condition to give them more oomph. Am I wrong, did I say that?
So the order which I'm afraid of is that, that, that the pouring will become.
More than forty percent.
Yeah.
Right.
That'll, that'll be his mainstay rather than the brewing of beer, that's what I'm just trying to say.
What, so what we've done is, you know, we've said in the, the definition of accessory use speaks to the area, so that may be.
Okay, that's what's based on here, okay.
That may be redundant, but if we wanna specifically have enforceable subordinate hours of operation, I'm concerned that putting it in the description does not do that, that it needs to be a condition. And so we're not, like, setting an explicit limit on the hours as we could do if we wanted to. But we are saying that there will be fewer hours dedicated to the accessory use than to the primary use. Which is not in the, you know, which would need to be added above and beyond the definition of accessory use in the zoning ordinance.
Any comments?
Well, sorry, I'm agreeing and disagreeing.
Well, how many hours does he actually brew beer?
So the, the manifest, well.
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours?
So if he, if he dices it up, how would, how would the, uh, you know, the amount of time he spends brewing beer compared to what he's, how often he sells beer?
Right.
That's what it comes down to, right?
So if you, if you wanna take, uh, you know.
So if he's been twenty-four hours and he's always selling beer, six hours, it means he's still got eighteen hours that he's brewing.
Right.
If he's doing it twenty-four hours, I mean, you know, you gotta get a.
My understanding was that it wasn't twenty-four hours a day.
I don't know, you'll need to ask.
He's the man who's brewing it.
I'm brewing right now.
It happens constantly.
Well, okay.
I know what you're saying, I know exactly what you're saying.
But I'm talking about active working hours. You know, where there's people coming and going. Because we're talking about, you know.
Yeah, but in his case, it doesn't have to be there, what is brewing? Nobody punching a clock watching this stuff, it's just doing what it's doing, you know?
Okay.
Well, we need to make a decision if we're gonna add this or not. Uh, anyone have, any comments? Chat, you want it in? Harry?
Well, I know, I know exactly what you're saying.
I know what you're saying.
I know what they're trying to say.
Alternatively, we could explicitly, you know, we could explicitly set a limit, I don't think anyone wants to do that.
Yeah, I know, we could.
But I feel, but I feel, you know, I just wanna be sensitive to the fact that, you know, we're, we are potentially talking about. The, we're, you know, an increase in the number of hours a day, seven days a week, that there's active.
Pouring?
Active people coming and going and, and.
More than the forty percent.
Yeah, and.
Well, that's all you're talking about, is forty percent of the use.
Well, forty percent of area.
Area, yeah, and that's all I was talking about.
But I'm talking about, you know.
Just the area.
We could make it forty percent of the time that the facility is open and.
Well, how would you, how would you go about enforcing that? To find out if he has or isn't. How to determine that? Is it enforceable?
It's a good question.
I mean, how would you enforce it?
I think it would give us something if there was a, if there was a complaint, then there would be, just look into it.
The only way we would know on it is through complaints.
Even then, it'd be not impossible.
Yeah, when, it'd be impossible to score it. How could you score?
We could also explicitly, if we wanted to keep the tasting room the size, the accessory use the size that it is, instead of, you know, potentially making it bigger. We could also put a limit, a specific six hundred square foot limit on the, on the tasting room area.
Yeah.
So if we, like, there's two ways to do it, there's, there's either just say that it's subordinate or there's to set explicit numbers to make it subordinate.
Or leave it the way it is, which de.
Or to leave it the way it is, which is not what I'm proposing.
To design, which is what I prefer.
Right.
Yeah, I think we should, cause my head's spinning, I think we should just leave it the way it is. I don't, unless, don't see a reason for trying to hobble this business.
Right.
I, I think we have to balance the interests of the business with the interests of the community. And I don't believe we would be hobbling the business to set some reasonable minor limits to make sure that this remains primarily a manufacturing facility and not primarily.
Even on the off chance that we approve that forty percent of hours, you're talking seventy hours a week that he could be open selling beer.
Right.
Okay, so I think at this point, in order to move forward, we should get a sense of where we're at on this. Add it or not add it, Chat?
Not add it.
Harry?
I can't make my mind, go ahead, click on the line.
No?
Yes?
So we've got three now, so that tells us already that, I mean, I'd love to know your opinion.
I know exactly what you're saying, you know?
I don't disagree either, I just think that it's covered already earlier on, so.
But this is the same, this is the exact same, like, logical problem that created the confusion in the first place and we're putting it right back in the final.
I, I really don't think we are, no, not at all, no, we've removed the, the language there that you're referring to and it defaults to that in the zoning. So I just don't think, I think what you'd be doing by adding that is muddying it further. Okay, so we've got, we've got the majority here that's, that doesn't want it, am I right about that? Alright, now we can take a vote on adding it in if you wanna call a vote to it, that's official parliamentary stuff, so I mean, you can force this and, and I totally respect your.
I'm not, I'm not going to force it, but I may not, I may not be able to vote in favor of the final decision, I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Understand. Okay. Um, so you don't wanna call a vote to that?
Well, okay, I mean, should, which, which language would, would, are you more inclined to go with? The specific hour limitation or just stating that it should be subordinate?
Me?
Yeah.
Then it was subordinate.
Okay, so let's, let's vote on this condition.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't have nothing to do with the hours, just it would be a subordinate.
So.
It's a subordinate.
So, this is the, the proposed language, we can tweak it if you want. Hours of operation, area, and revenue of the tasting room, or let's say of the accessory use, shall remain subordinate to the primary use.
Right. You go with that.
And that would be added in as condition in your motion.
Nine?
Condition nine.
Libby, can you repeat that for the record, please?
Hours of operation, area, and revenue of the accessory uses shall remain subordinate to the primary use.
Are you going to look at our revenue though? Does that concern me?
Well, that's the point, I mean, the point is, the whole, the whole point comes down, is it enforceable?
I apologize, I, I don't mean to do this, Harry, but, uh, you're in the process of making a motion, so I have to let you, no, I have to let you complete it. Is there anything else, are you gonna recommend changing some of the language up above to, to move?
I, if people feel it's redundant to have it in the description, I'm open to changing it, but it, I don't mind having it, having the language in the description and this language in the condition.
So which are you suggesting in your motion?
Do people have thoughts? I mean, right, like, right now, I think we should just vote on the proposed condition.
Okay, so leave the, leave the upper part alone, okay, alright, is there a second to the motion?
One second, I think, I'm going.
Okay, good, there we go, we have a second, now we can go into discussion, I apologize for putting you off.
No, 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 that's just, okay, believe me.
So, discussion. We're, we're talking about.
The only point out, the only thing I want to, I'd like to make a, is it enforceable, that's the thing.
So.
We can't, we can't open the guy's book and say, look at it, are you getting forty percent more, we don't know what's going on down there.
So, my goal here is to give us, you know, some benchmarks to determine whether the accessory uses are actually, like, the retail, you know, accessory uses are becoming the primary use. And I don't, I think it's the only thing that wouldn't need to be enforced on a regular basis, but could come up at some point in the future. If there was a complaint or if, you know, it seemed like circumstances had changed, it may need to be reviewed. And I think these, these benchmarks would be, you know, things that you could determine and then make a decision based on them if you needed to review them.
Right. Wouldn't it be better, you're gonna get complaints, but would it be better to wait for the complaints to come in and then have it gone over by whatever? Whether it's the health or the. Building inspector or whatever, it's.
Potentially, you could have.
It's the enforcement.
Potentially, you could have somebody launch a complaint.
Right.
And not even have any idea what they're talking about.
So you think it's just too, would to be too open to complaints?
I'd like to remind the board too, that essentially what's happened here is you've taken this sentence from the narrative and just added it in as a condition, that's the only thing. It's already in the narrative, this sentence, it's just going in as a condition, because a condition has more teeth.
I think that, that, you know, it should be enforceable, cause that's, you know. That's the point.
How?
But who's enforcing?
Explain to me how to enforce it, I don't think we can do it.
I mean, it seems to me easier to.
How would you enforce it?
It seems to me easier to enforce than something like, you know, the decibels, which, you know, our police force doesn't have the equipment to, to evaluate that. But what hours are you open, what square footage are you using, and are you putting more money into your, you know, are you making more money on one thing than the other? It seems pretty clear cut to me.
Why, why, we wanna know if they're making more money on one thing than on the other.
Okay.
It's, it's, I, I'm not attached to that benchmark, if you wanna get rid of it, I was just trying to think of ways to determine what makes something subordinate to another in this context.
Any other discussion? Alright, we'll call the vote. All in favor of the proposed, proposed motion?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, all against? Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? And there we have it. So we don't have an additional, an additional line item.
No.
Are there any other changes or modifications that anyone wants to make to this?
No.
Okay. Uh, does someone wanna make a motion to approve the special permit for?
Amendment to the special.
Amendment, thank you very much, amendment to the special permit for thirty-Fort Hill Road seventeen seventy-six Brewing Company LLC, would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'm not...
Going to...
I'm not feeling, you know, comfortable. I don't know that we're doing our best job here at balancing the, the interests of the community. And I, I would really like to have some condition here that gets us out of the bind that we were in with the original permit. And I'm very flexible on the language, but I think we need a condition.
Any other comments?
I'm just trying to figure out how come you think that was part of the original, the original deal. And the only thing we didn't do was, was have him not be able to sell, in my estimation, I know...
Sell retail.
Yeah, have no retail, and we're completely overhauling that as we can. That's about the only difference.
Right. In a roundabout way.
So, you know, I, I'll...
I wish I understood it, too. I, I respect your feelings, I, I just...
I know.
What you're saying just doesn't make sense to me, and I want it to, I really do, but it's, it's just not making sense.
If that, if that what you're saying was totally enforceable...
Jessica, can you make any...
I would say yes. But to me, it's not.
I think what Libby is trying to get at is that she's referenced the 2011 special permit where it was in the narrative, and that's been the crux of all of this activity that has taken many months to iron out between the ZBA Planning Board. And, um, I think what she's just reflecting on is that this may be ending up in a similar way because I think the concern that Libby's expressed is that, um, that the business will go from what has been permitted as a manufacturing business and tipped to be a retail business. Now, granted, both of those things are permitted in this zone, but this has been permitted as a manufacturing business with an accessory use of a retail component. If those, if it shifts and the retail component ends up being more of the primary use, then that's going to be in conflict with the permit as drafted. And so I think that's what Libby is trying to get at, is trying to avoid a future situation of... And if that's where the business goes, that's where the business goes. And I would hope that if that's the case, then again, the permit could get amended to reflect that. It's not, it's not prohibiting that from happening if that's going to happen. It's just that the proper permitting process will need to occur to, to rectify that.
And that's the, that's the power that...
But it's the wording that we're having.
Well, plus, we have it in our narrative already.
But that's the problem.
But it's not a, it's not a prevention.
Well, and beyond that...
But the narrative was for the, for the no pub or retail was also in the last one, and that was the crux of the issue.
But we've taken out that restriction so that now, even though we have that coming in there, even without that, it still defaults to the zoning. I mean, even if we struck that whole thing from both the top and the bottom, it would default to the zoning.
But I would like to make sure that if that, if that does shift, that then we have an opportunity to determine whether there are additional conditions or changes to, you know, to ensure...
Impacts.
Impa, thank you, impacts that we need to consider.
So, if we don't do this, and you turn into a toy factory, would he be required?
Yes.
Yes.
Any change you use requires a new special permit. I think what, I think...
So what is this doing?
I think what Libby is getting at, if I'm, if I can try to explain this, is let's, let's take something very specific. Let's take trip generation from traffic. If you're a transportation engineer and you're doing trip generation analysis, you have a book this big that gives trip generations for every single use that ever would exist in a commercial industrial zone. There are different trip numbers for something that's a manufacturing facility versus something that's a retail facility. And it even goes into the square footage of the retail facility, what the retailer may even be selling, is it fast food? There are different trip numbers for all of those different categories. I think what Libby is expressing is that if it goes from a manufacturing facility, what is its primary use, and then goes to a, a more of a retail base, the trip generations are going to be completely different. And that will have impacts on the streets, possibly on the neighborhood. So I think that's where she's just getting at, is, is wanting to make sure that that's clear, that if...
Right, but it'll still come before us for a new permit in those cases.
One would hope so.
But the question is...
What do you mean, one would hope so?
So there's no change.
So should we, no, I'm gonna, see, I have to go back to what Libby's been saying. Should we have some kind of wording in there to which will allow us to somehow notify us the shifting? Or some way that it'll show the off-balance? I don't know how you could word it. I mean, like, without going into their finances, but...
On page two, the last sentence of the first paragraph. "Any significant departure from the attached plan specifications and/or designs without approval of the board may result in rescinding this decision."
That language didn't occur in the 2011.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's new language that we put in all of our permits now.
Right.
So, I would, based on that, that if there's any significant change...
That we have the language in.
That would be a significant change. That would be the language that would help us make our decision, because the language is already there to have them come back.
Any other discussion?